Good evening, welcome to the September 19th study session. I ask that everyone either turn off their phone or silence them. And we've got four items on the agenda. We'll start with the first one, Semiannual Report from the Leavenworth Public Library. Please come forward.
Well, I did bring a document to share with everyone. I will make sure that Mr. Richardson gets a copy. And I was only able to finalize this yesterday because we kept getting schedule changes.
Thank you.
So we couldn't get this done early and get it to Carl.
Hi, yes.
And I'll talk about this through my report.
Well, thank you for having me this evening. In September, our National Library Cards Sign Up Month is underway with the city schools. All the applications and library information have been distributed to all the classrooms. The last year, we issued 347 new library cards and 322 state library cards. Now, it's not likely we'll get that many this year because we've already kind of covered that neighborhood once. But we do expect numerous applications from new students, especially kindergarteners. So we'll have -- those will be returned and we'll have the cards issued. The schools will issue them by the end of the month. We talked, I think, earlier in April about acquiring a VOIP system for our telephones. We've installed the equipment and it's configured. All the staff have been trained. We're planning to do the conversion in October. And we will save about $16,000 in phone costs over the next five years, which is about $3,000 over the cost of the equipment and the software license. So it will more than pay for itself in five years. And then renewing that license after that five-year period will be even less expensive. Tomstown will be playing speakeasy-era jazz at the library on Friday, October 6th, where we did a very successful fundraiser in the spring. And we're going to do that again in a couple of weeks. Tickets are 20 each or two for 35. Free wine, beer, and snacks and desserts will be served. That's the one thing we realized last time, we didn't bring enough dessert. So we will make sure we have enough of that around for everybody. And it would be great to see the city represented at that library that night. As far as library use goes, generally, our circulation is up about 4% this year compared to the same period last year. Our summer reading program, we had 1,692 kids from birth to five years come to programs, 707 school age from 6 to 11, 192 12 to 18, so the young adults. And adult attendance was 279, which was highest than we've ever had. I think Cindy McGuire, who you probably know from her work with Main Street and some other local organizations, has been doing a great job bringing in programs, marketing them to adults. So we had over, for that summer program altogether, 2,870 people come to programs. We are the lead organizer of the First City Science Fair. I don't know if I've talked to you about that before. I know Commissioner Rainey's probably familiar. Got involved in it through the Rotary. It began as an initiative at a Rotary district. And then we had a whole interest group get together. And I kind of got pushed to the front and said, "Hey, you're a library guy. How about if you take care of this?" So I've been running it for about three years with University St. Mary with a lot of help from them, of course, other Rotary members who helped bring in people to do programs. We've done it three years straight. We have about 600 to 700 eighth graders come in from Leavenworth, Fort Leavenworth and Lansing schools. They go to hands-on workshops throughout the day. Each group comes in, spends about two hours. Institutions ranging from the county emergency management department to Kansas State University, University of St. Mary, you have the program in front of you. This year, it'll be on Wednesday, October 4th, from 8:00 to 2:15. So the final touches have been put on that. I hope I don't have any more changes to the schedule. Six of our staff members will be attending the Kansas Library Association's Annual Conference in Wichita, which is at the end of October. And Cindy McGuire, who I mentioned before, is our Marketing and Programs Coordinator. She's presenting a workshop at the conference called Marketing Your Library Services and Programs. And that's kind of unique because most libraries in Kansas really don't think too much about marketing. There aren't very many workshops on that. As a matter of fact, in the three years I've seen schedules for the annual conference, there's never been a single one about how to market the library. So we're very glad that Cindy's going to put her experience and knowledge to good use and help some other libraries around Kansas think about it. It's not an impossible thing to do, even for small libraries. There are ways that you can handle your social media, ways that you can, you know, software that you can use and other things to make it easy and affordable. In December, we're collaborating with the CGSC Foundation. I don't know if you've heard of the Art of War Initiative that they have going? So they're going to do an exhibit in the library in December. We just met today with two representatives. And we're going to, haven't exactly figured out what artifacts we want to bring in, but we're going to try to arrange a speaker or two to have an opening night and have that in our three display cases or four display cases through the month of December, which I think will be pretty unique. I was, I know that Johnson County has better display facilities and they have a whole gallery, but I kind of wish we'd been first because we're at the Leavenworth Public Library and it's right down the street. But they did want, I think, to have a bigger splash in a place where they could put, you know, a few hundred of those articles out.
Yeah.
The foundation, the Leavenworth Public Library Foundation is gearing up for their annual fundraising campaign. I believe they're going to get all the cards and everything signed and get those mailed out by October. The target for the proceeds from this effort will be the replacement of worn, stained, and damaged furnishings in all areas of the library. A lot of our furnishing has been in the building since about 1986, and it's definitely showing its wear and tear. We're looking for some material that will be easier to clean, less likely to stain, and look for durability is one of the prime factors. And I know we have talked a lot about our employee benefits fund. And at the end of this month, the end of August, I'm sorry, we had about 88,259 left and projected expenses of about 68, not counting whatever increases we get in December. So I think that $15,000 to $20,000 surplus that we projected for the end of this budget year is probably going to be pretty close. Did anybody have any questions or comments or anything that I left out?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Sounds like you're having a very busy October, at least.
Yeah, that's going to be, going to be pretty active. So technology changes and service changes and new partnerships all the time.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Well, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is review loitering laws. Chief Kitchens?
Mayor Protim, Commissioners, the police departments are here this evening to discuss with you the issues of loitering laws. In a recent study, in a recent commission meeting, there was a direction by the commission to the staff to do some review of that, specifically of loitering laws. But I think it's sort of semi-related to the slight uptick in the homeless population and some issues that have developed in the last few months. As it relates to specifically the loitering law issue, loitering laws were ruled to be unconstitutional in 1999 by the Supreme Court. That's a big case. There are some other smaller ones, but that's the big one. And since that time, we have not, the law enforcement profession has not enforced those. They're simply not enforceable. For some reason, it's still on our books in the municipal code of ordinance, I think, simply because no one's gotten around to taking it out. But we haven't enforced that. So in terms of approach, because loitering is not enforceable, there's some other things that we do. So it's important to have the conversation this way. There is a distinct difference between public property and private property. Simply put, in public property, places like a sidewalk or something like that or a park, it is not illegal to stand around and do nothing. In fact, the Supreme Court's specific language had to do with Chicago's standing around with no purpose. That was the language to cite it in there. As it relates to private property, it entirely depends on the property owner as to whether or not they want us to come and take enforcement action. Whether or not it's public property or private property, there must be specific behavior demonstrated by the person that we can identify and has been classified as illegal, disorderly conduct, yelling and shouting, criminal trespass. Those are some tools that we have in our tool bag that we use in an effort to try and target this particular issue and help. There have been a couple of, what I, I don't know, have captured the most public attention, the folks that opened up the yard sale at the old pawn shop location on 4th Street that garnered a little bit of attention from the public. "Oh, my gosh, what's going on down there?" So in terms of that, once we hear about that, if I recall correctly, we started to hear about that on Saturday. "Hey, can they do that? Hey, what's going on with that situation?" And so it takes us a few days to sort through who owns the property. We have to find someone who is in a position of authority to say, "No, we did not give them permission to do that." And then we take action from that point. So generally speaking, our approach, my guidance to the staff in that case is go out there and give them some time to get everything gathered up and leave. They can't stay there. And that's what happened here. I think we've had that same circumstance occasionally at the Haymarket Square where there's been problems where folks have stayed there and then we've gone down, given them the warning, and they left. Beyond that, though, you know, those are the tools in our bag. We typically use them. We try not to be overly harsh in our tactics unless we have what I would describe as repeat performance from folks that just sort of move around and we kind of chase them around. And so that's the sort of opening salvo. We can have a conversation about that, or you can ask whatever specific questions you might have. I'll see if I can help.
Yeah, I think mostly this was, because we, I think, you know, getting inquiries and that may be an air to the public that, you know, you have concerns with homeless this, but it's not illegal to just stand around and do nothing. I do it downtown quite frequently on that, but, you know, and there's no easy solutions to this problem, you know, and that's, it's more complicated than that. And arresting people just because is still not a solution either on that, so.
You mentioned something about Haymarket Square. Mention that again. You had some people on Haymarket Square. That's a public area. How could you move them out of there?
There were, okay, in that particular case, they were still there. The folks that run the farmer's market had arranged to be there, and so they have preference. And so in that case, we can say, "Okay, listen, because of the city's ability to distinguish that as someone's using it, okay, you can't be there now." We can then go down there and exercise that and make them move.
Wait, and I honestly, I called and asked and inquired about that, too, because they had a cot out there and it looked like they were making like a sleeping arrangement out there. So I called and inquired.
Right. The other thing I think we tinkered with was whether that counts as a park. The parks are closed at a certain period of time. And so in that regard, we can, there's an ordinance, there's some legal authority to take action, that sort of thing. That's what we're always looking for in trying to address that, is making sure we have proper legal authority to act. And so usually, there's some way we can get there without being overly harsh and moving them along. And we've done that. Our officers have noticed a slight uptick in the calls and concerns from the community. Three weeks, two, three weeks ago, I got a call from a business owner downtown. They were showing up very early in the morning. There were folks in the alley. So they asked us to come down and see if we could help with that. We were able to work out a solution in that regard. So that's what we are at this point in terms of approach, is sort of solution-oriented negotiation, you know, and that. We have, I would say, seven to 10 folks that probably everybody knows and is seen in town. There's probably some mental illness and substance abuse issues going on. Causes people to get a little concerned about that. We deal with that, and that's the broader issue of mental health that we struggle with overall. So I have met a couple of times with Sister Vicki and her staff. She's asked for some consultation on things like rules and regulations as they move through the construction process of the homeless shelter up there. And we've talked a lot about some ideas. And so we've been working with her in that regard to try and get that as a tool for us to reduce some of it when that's open during the day. And so there's sort of a window that we're worried about between the time that closes and the overnight shelter opens that we're going to focus on in terms of that. You know, we continue to work on and monitor it and do the best we can.
Yeah, I just, I drove by it today and I was really surprised at all the progress that they're making and found out earlier that they're hopefully going to be open in November.
Right.
Yeah. And have you kind of discussed, too, if you're talking about rules and regulations, too? And I don't mean to put you on the spot or anything and how, but when they're not, when they're no longer welcomed at the homeless center and then just going down the road, not for tonight, but, you know, maybe how will, because that's going to happen.
Sure.
How will we address some of those issues, too?
Sure. In that regard, you know, keeping them out of that location is easy. They've been told they're not welcome to come back for whatever reason, behavioral rules violations and that sort of thing. And so our experience is with that, or let's say there's a group of 10 of those folks, five of them will move on to a different community that has services available they haven't taken advantage of. And so it's that group that's left here that we sort of try and figure out how to deal with as best we can. And, you know, as long as they're behaving themselves, generally speaking, to the extent that they, one of the other smaller issues that we've had, not smaller, one of the other issues we've had would be like, we've broken up a couple of encampments where it's a piece of abandoned property where it takes a little while for folks to notice, "Hey, something's going on over there." And so we partner with code enforcement and we get, we get that resolved. It's all about public property versus private property. If it's a private property issue and the property owner has given them permission, you know, that limits our ability. But then at some point, you know, it ultimately becomes a problem for other code violations. And so we partner with them and have done that a couple of times and work pretty well.
So is the definition of criminal trespassing, you're on property without the owner's permission?
That's correct.
Okay.
Keeping in mind that procedurally, though, there has to be a formal notification. It can't, so generally speaking, if it's the first time you call, you say, "I don't want this person here," what we'll do, and that is, as a result of court rulings, you are formally told, "You're not welcome here and don't come back." And if you come back, you're subject to criminal trespassing. That always is a requirement that we impose. We have a file.
You get a warning, okay.
You know, if you get caught shoplifting at Walmart, we have a big file of folks that, you know, they're obviously not welcome back or behavior at locations. There's probably half a dozen folks that Mr. Grant has asked not to come back to the community center because of behavior problems, and so they're not welcome back there. I think we've had one or two folks at City Hall, we've asked not to come back for disruptive behavior. And we're always treading very carefully on that. It's a public building. Some folks, even though one or two times they might have misbehaved, they still have a legal right to come here and conduct public business. And so we have to be careful about that. But if they get too disruptive, we have told them they can't come back and we've been okay in that regard.
Okay.
On any given night, I'd say between 5:30 and 7:45 at the post office in the common area there, usually somebody's there.
Right.
And if it's inclement weather, raining, cold or something, there might be four or five.
Right.
Kind of racked out there, asleep until what time they can leave. There's nothing that's completely legit.
As long as the post office or whoever is in a position of authority at the post office doesn't call us and say, "We don't want them here anymore," then yes, they're allowed to do that, as long as it's open to the public. And I imagine they have some sort of, I don't know that the right word is corporate policy, but I'm sure there's some sort of policy at the post office in higher echelons that would govern that. But we, in order for us to act and take some action to ask them to move and move them along, we'd have to have somebody in a position of authority ask us to do that.
And you said on public property, city-owned property, if they're not interfering with, you know, being a park and sleeping at noon or something like that, in theory, could they come in this building and sleep on the bench outside in the public area there?
Um, I'd have to give that some thought. The question would be whether or not their behavior is disruptive. So let's say that we had something going on, an event, probably not, because that would be probably disruptive. But that's a close one, right? That's a close one.
Sometimes we have some people who come in and just sit and use the Wi-Fi and not like, or, you know, lean back and they're there for an hour or two. It's not much different than closing your eyes.
Yeah.
As long as they're not loud or something.
Right, disruptive. We've, you know, we've asked a few folks to leave.
Yeah. And do you have any calls from business owners, probably more downtown? Some people have alcoves going into their front door, you know, at closing hours. Quite often, you'll see some people on cots or on chairs, kind of racked out there.
Many, I probably, I don't know if you use the word many, but we have gotten some calls from folks that are operating businesses downtown that have concerns. Occasionally is probably a better word to describe them. I have, in the last, I want to say, couple of years, really started to focus on capturing data to make sure that if at some point somebody asks me a question, I can give them some clear answers about that. The problem is sometimes when we're encountering folks, they don't identify themselves as homeless or something like that. So we have some data, the validity and accuracy of it, I don't know how well it is. But we have been paying more close attention to that in terms of data analysis and stuff in the last couple of years, because we've had a little uptick of that.
Can a business owner give you a blanket notification, "I don't want anybody camped out on my property"?
Yes.
And not, doesn't have to be, Joe Smith's there today, Jane Smith's there tomorrow. Has to, doesn't, he or she doesn't have to do one for each person. They can say, "I don't want anybody camped out on my property." Because I've had some business owners talk to me, ask me, "How do I do it?" And I've kind of said, "You talk to the chief." But asking that question now, say I own a business downtown, I close at 5:00 and I've got an alcove and people come in, can they say, give you a blanket authorization saying, "I'm not giving anybody any permission to camp out there for whether it be one hour, two hours, or overnight."
And I, can I, I just, out there from experience, we used to have a bench in front of our store. And obviously, you're welcoming people to sit there and that type of thing. Because I had to have police officer, you know, come out there at one time because you could tell somebody was sleeping there. Sleeping's not good. If I put the bench out there, it complicates, it complicates his job. Because I'm welcoming people to sit down.
But the bench, public property, that's an asylum.
Yeah, the bench is, no, it's on a public sidewalk, but it's my private bench. So downtown, it gets a little, it gets a little sticky, so it's a case-by-case basis.
Blanket directives like that, you probably can't. It would be much better for us to tell the individual person, "Hey, you know, don't do that." Because blanket directives apply to everybody, right? The folks that you want there and the folks that you might not want there. So you have to be a little careful about that.
Somebody comes in, does some window shopping, you don't want to roll them out.
Right. It would be better if, yeah, and any private property owner, for the most part, can tell someone, "I don't want you here for most reasons except for those things protected, you know, constitutionally, race and religion and that sort of thing you have to be careful about." But, you know, yeah, a private property owner has great leeway in telling us, "We don't want this person here and we can come take action for them."
You mentioned you've seen an uptick over the last couple of years. Do you see problems or you just see an uptick in just the number of folks? Have there been problems associated with it?
Well, my definition of problem in years is probably a little bit different. So we're used to dealing with problems. It has not yet risen to a level where there is too much for us to handle or anything like that. It's sort of put into the whole group of the things that we deal with, right? But there, we have, we have noticed a slight uptick in our, you know, calls from the community to help in that regard.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Any real questions?
No, I think it's mostly downtown business owners and there's a presence there that there hasn't been five years ago.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Anything else, Chief? Thank you. Next item is C.W. Parker Carousel Museum sign request.
Mr. Mayor Protim, in commission at the July 25th city commission study session, represented us from the Parker Carousel Museum, presented a proposal to place a sign, publicizing the museum at Ray Miller Park. The sign directed visitors to the museum and encouraged them to come ride the carousel. So what staff did was looked at, do we address this anywhere? Does anybody address a sign like this anywhere? And how does this fit into our policy, our sign regulations? Just in brief, our sign recognition policy is specifically and directly related to recognizing local community members, individuals who achieve great levels of success within their lifetime, taken directly from the policy. Therefore, we, the staff doesn't believe there's any provision in the policy that would accommodate this, nor would it be appropriate to give a waiver to this because it doesn't address it in the positive or the negative, so it just wouldn't be applicable. Sign regulations, there is no allowance in the sign code for off-site advertisements of this type. The sign would actually fall into the category of classification as a billboard, which the commission has been pretty forceful, and the sign code does strictly prohibit in the sign code. Additionally, there's no allowance in the sign code for signs to be placed in the right-of-way or city property. The sign recognition policy specifically grants that for those policies. Some other things we looked at as far as signs where this could fit, there's been, the city's been working with Main Street for quite a while on some directional signage for the downtown that could accommodate this. But again, this would be in the downtown and not south in the area of Ray Miller Park. And the Carousel Museum does have a sign on a speed limit sign on 4th Street directing people with an arrow. It doesn't have the full "Come Ride" in the museum. So other solutions, we didn't find anything that's out there that specifically addressed this type of sign request where nonprofit advertisement or nonprofit-type stuff wasn't addressed anywhere. So we basically boiled it down to, it's really up to the city commission if they want to sort of just under no authority through sign policy or sign recognition, but just your authority as the elected body, allow a sign to be put in this location. Staff would have concerns about further proliferation of these types of signs around Ray Miller Park, the precedent of opening locations to tourist attractions, nonprofits, all, you know, extremely valuable to our community. But, you know, the carousel would be no different than the First City Museum or the Carroll Mansion or anything like that. So we just didn't, my report in summary is that we didn't find anything within our existing sign code, sign recognition policy, or any of our other sign-related stuff that would, that would allow this to happen. But the city commission certainly has the discretion to decide.
Any thoughts on it, Commissioner Rainey?
I have a question, though, Paul, in the policy. You said you've been working with Main Street for more than a year on, like, directional signage. Can you kind of give us a brief update of what's been happening there?
I wish I had a better update for you on that. I believe it's been probably closer to two or three years. The commission indicated some strong financial support. And it's, we've asked Main Street for a plan, sign location, sign design. We haven't got it. I correspond about every three to six months. I know they're working on it. We do have a person on their, an ex officio member on their board. But we haven't received any kind of signed plan related to wayfinding in the downtown. So I'm hopeful, but, you know, it's been a couple of years now.
Okay. Something to put on the future goal list there, maybe, to look at directed. I think that's a good thing. And just kind of coming back from some travels over the summer, how helpful it was, and this is in a big city, but even in a downtown city, even, you know, for the museum to take advantage of being downtown and getting that walking traffic there, I think that would be more beneficial. I would just like to see that in the downtown in general on that. So I'll, and then I'll maybe just visit with Main Street on that, too, on, you know, are they, is it too busy? Is it ambitious, you know? Or are they just, you know, something that they, you know, haven't ironed out all the details and that to come with a plan on that. I don't know about publication. That opens up a very slippery slope. There's one thing to have directional signage to a place, but publicizing any nonprofit, we have so many. And that, you know, that's like, that's like putting free out there, you know? And it's never that. And so, especially on public property, I'm not too comfortable going down that direction on that.
Commissioner Rainey, any thoughts?
I have to agree with Commissioner Weekly. Our policy does not allow for this. And to make the exception, I think, would open the door for other nonprofits and places that are going to want to put signs in. And it'd be kind of hard to shut the door on them if we allow it the other. So it's under my opinion that we leave the policy as is. And maybe think about changing the sign downtown to the one you're talking about. Changing the one that just says "Arrow going this way" to something that, you know, if it's allowed downtown, but not up south of town, no.
Did you want to speak, sir, or no?
Yeah.
Please, come up. You can sit here if you'd like and give us your name again.
Clarification.
Yeah.
I didn't, we didn't necessarily come up with that sign design.
Mr. Baker, give us your name.
Tony Baker with the Parker Carousel Museum. If I redesign a sign to a two-by-three, which is basically what's out there now, we thought one with a picture of a carousel at the top, C.W. Parker, Carousel King, which was his title back in the 20s. Would something like that be acceptable? We don't advertise rides, we're not, and we're not advertising anything. We're mentioning just the name like that was out there.
I don't know that we're prepared to answer that right now unless Mr. Rainey.
Yeah, there's an application process for an individual recognition sign.
Yeah, right.
So if you were to switch it to honoring just the person, then we have an application for that, to do that.
Okay.
But you understand the position on the initial sign that you.
Sure.
Was open Tuesday through Friday, 9:00 to 5:00 or something like that.
Right.
If you have an advertising sign that you don't have any leeway, if we did, the flood gates would open for a lot of things.
Yeah, I understand that. Yeah, I understand that and, and Paul mentioned it to me, you know, before the meeting that, you know, that was going to come up and I, I, I understand that. But I, I would like to, uh, hope that maybe convention tourism could get a, uh, a sign that would list all the museums, both on the north and the south. And I, I tried to get on with Christie today, but I, I didn't, wasn't able to reach her. Um, I'm on that committee, so I'll, uh, bring that up to her and that way you can list, you know, we, we've got four or five in town, we've got the fort and, uh-
Sure.
As far as the design of the signs on, on this, on this larger, you know, sign, uh, who has the, who has the authority as to what, what copy is on that? Is that going to be, uh-
What sign is that?
Well, if they come up with a, say, the convention tourism bureau comes up with a, uh, a large sign.
It would be up to the city commission on whether they wanted to put a sign on public property like that and what it would look like and, you know, all that, that would be a commission-
It'd still go through the sign committee first.
Yeah.
Well, it's prob, it's not really addressed in the sign policy. There's no, there's no category in the sign policy for a nonprofit-
Yeah, and Mr. Baker, I, also too, with the location, I, and putting it at that, because, I mean, we've designated Ray Miller Park to honor individuals that have distinguished records in, in the community on that. Um, I would be open though, like it, like the carousel has one that's a directional sign, maybe not at that particular location, but if it's off of a main thoroughfare to guide people, you know, to the Carousel Museum, you know, that type of thing, so. Um, but not necessarily at Ray Miller Park, 'cause right now too, there's a lot of signs there.
Yes, there is.
And, and, you know, and that, so, I asked you to be indulgent and maybe be a little flexible on your location there, just, you know, um, cognizant too of that Carol sign at the Carroll Mansion has been there for a long time, personally, never noticed it until I had to go out there and find it today. And you're looking at a whole new direction and generation of kids that are, and people that, it's, it's their, it's their GPS that they look to find you on that, so. Signs, you know, I, I want you to be able to track people, that's why I think the downtown directional signs will help you, 'cause you're capturing that downtown market with the other businesses. And then I just want you to spend your dollars wisely too on that.
The directional signs that we have, you said you put up, one by Henry Martins and one up by the-
Yeah.
Chamber. All right, we, those are definitely worth walking, when people come in and say, well, we saw your sign and we put one down.
Yeah.
But for, to try and get people that are just coming into town, to try and get, you know, let them see what we have to offer.
Mm-hmm.
Not necessarily just us, but-
Yeah.
-the Carroll Mansion, uh, the, uh, one up north, Richard Allen, Forest Fort.
Yeah, that's, that's where-
That's something that-
Yeah.
Are you, uh-
To, you know, list all of us on.
Yeah.
We're all, we're all working together on other-
That's, that's true. And honestly, working with our CBB, I think that that would, you know, work better, but probably working better with social media and stuff like that. It's, that's a more effective tool than offering people, telling people what you have to offer and getting them in your door, these words.
Other than most of, you know, a good number of our people, they're, they're older people.
Mm-hmm.
And we, uh, kind of hashed that out at one of our convention tourism meetings back before Christie came, but a particular director wanted everything, uh, on the internet and no papers and all this and that, but the older people, they want paper. They want to have something.
A brochure.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Uh, they're not comfortable looking up on the, or on the phone or whatever.
No, and-
I kind of like that too.
Yeah.
But I, but I still take the other one just to make sure that the phone is, is not, uh-
One thing I wanted to point out by, I don't know, it was you, Mr. Baker, whoever presented this, you don't have a demand issue. I mean, you've got plenty of demand, people are coming there and writing that. You told me, or told us, there's 22,000-
Yeah.
People wrote it last year and could have been more, but you don't have enough staff. You don't have a, you've got a supply problem. You don't have enough staff to staff it five days a week, 10 hours a day.
Well, that's true.
Yeah, so you, I mean, you, you don't, you don't have an advertising problem. In fact, if you advertise, you're going to have people camped out there and the police chief's going to have to enforce some law during laws.
We can have more people than we're getting, but-
Uh, but I mean, you have a pretty good, uh, clientele or-
Yeah.
I don't know if you have many repeat customers, you do with my grandkids, I know, but, uh, you're, you're doing very well. It's, by not having an advertising sign that says Carousel Museum, 10 to 5, Monday through Friday, whatever it might say, uh, it, I don't think it's hampering your success. You're very, very successful there. People do, it's, there might be a few people coming and say, oh, it's here, let me go down and do it, but it's kind of a, it's a destination in this town, right? You know, tour groups and other people come from out of town, it's, it's a destination that you want to go to.
And we, you know, the, the tours are, we had a fairly good, good-sized tour from Emporia just last week and we, the tours are picking up-
Sure, sure.
Which is great, but it's not, not only for us, when they see us, they, they go to the Carroll Mansion or they go to the fort or Richard Allen, so.
Fort's a little bit tougher these days.
If either one of us can pull, pull them in, then, you know, it's, it's an advantage to all of us.
Sure, sure.
The city gets advantage of sales tax and all that other kind of stuff too, so. Uh, I, uh, I, I think, and I know we can have more within the days that we're open. So, uh, uh, I'll work with the sign, uh, committee or whatever.
And CBB.
Get a permit and see what, and I'll talk to Christie and see if we can't, see if I can get her to talk to the other museums-
Okay, okay.
And see if they, maybe the ballers get together and-
Yeah.
Story up here with-
Okay.
But I, I've been to, you know, other cities too and a lot of them will have, like, like Lansing, for instance, they have, they have all the service clubs listed on one of them.
Sure.
And I've been to cities where they, where they've listed points of interest. And, uh, it's, you know, you may come to see us, but maybe you don't know about the Victoria Mansion.
Right.
Or you don't know about Richard Allen.
Right.
And if you have all of them on a, on some kind of, uh, you know, signings board.
Yeah.
Uh, and maybe, you know, have them all the same size, tell us, you know, what we can put on it, you know, name, address, phone number, or maybe not phone number, but address. Uh, you know, get that kind of information so that they all look, you know, not, not all look the same.
You're on the CBB board.
Yes.
Yeah, and obviously that's something I think you should take up with, question here next board meeting.
Okay.
Definitely.
Discuss that and-
Okay, I would do that.
Obviously, uh, we can hear it, you know, for, you know, staff properly through them and, uh, go with some ideas.
So I get the permit to, to clerk shop, is that, that where I get it from?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Baker, thanks for being here. Uh, next item is annual review of development regu, regulations. Ms. Hurley?
Thank you. Okay, as you all remember, uh, just last year, uh, a year ago in June, we wrapped up a, about a year-long review and overhaul of the development regulations. And so this is just, um, kind of going over what we've been using last year and, um, making some small tweaks to items that have come up throughout that course. Uh, I'd anticipate that this would be an annual review, much like we go through the code of ordinances and fees and all of that, so, um, that's what we're looking at tonight. The planning commission did review these proposed changes at their meeting earlier this month, so I'll just run through quickly what we're looking at changing. Uh, the first would be in section 2.02 regarding plating. We have several different, uh, classifications of plaits that come through and two of them in the regulations, when we revised those, uh, the process for two different ones got put in the same. Um, the two that we'd be talking about would be administrative plaits, which are intended to be things like a lot split or a lot line adjustment, um, say you're going to, you know, swap some land with your neighbor, something like that. Those are intended to be approved administratively and not have to go through the planning commission. The second are minor subdivisions, which are intended to be, uh, small subdivisions, um, under a certain lot size with some, some requirements that would have to go through the planning commission. So just cleaning up that language so that it reflects, reflects the correct process. The next section would be section 2.04 regarding special use permits. Uh, we need to get language added in there regarding the protest, the process for protest petitions. Kansas statute does stipulate that the process for protest petition for a special use permit is the same as it is for rezoning, and we just don't have that language reflected in that section, so we need to get that in there.
Okay.
Uh, and then the same, uh, thing would be needing to get language in there regarding the need for the city commission to give final approval for special use permits. Right now, we just don't have that language in there, but the process is planning commission makes recommendations and it comes to this board for final approval.
Okay.
Next is section, uh, 4.04, uh, regarding our use standards. And before we did this latest update, we had specific language regarding, uh, home occupations and home daycares, um, and that language was just inadvertently left out and that's something we need to get back in. Uh, it's language specifying what types of home occupations are allowed and not allowed, some specific requirements for daycares, um, and that's, that's just gotten left out, so we need to get that back in there. Uh, the next one is in section 4.04 again. Uh, we have a definition of yardicles, which is not an actual word, it was, I think, come up with by-
I know, that was, that was a, that was a new word for me there, yeah.
I've never found a definition for it. It's referring to basically miscellaneous yard decor, like-
Yard articles.
Yes.
Yeah.
Or mangos, uh, fire pits, that type of thing.
Right.
Um, the word drives me nuts, it drives everybody nuts, so just get that out of there and-
Thank you.
Call, call what it is. Next is in the parking section. Um, again, we just left out some language that needs to be in there, uh, that I left out inadvertently. Need to have a general requirement of one space for every 200 square feet of building space, and that would be for uses that are not specifically called out in our use table. Uh, the next is still in the parking section. Uh, we, we would like to have a, a provision for an allowance for reduced parking for historic structures, um, structures that are on a national register, um, give that provision that, uh, the planning commission could grant a reduction in parking so that they wouldn't have to go through a variance procedure, um, and for something that may be appropriate, um, to not have to add parking to a historic property.
Okay.
Um, and then the final one would be fences, specifically commercial fences. In the regulations, we have a height, uh, restrictions for, uh, residential fences and industrial fences, but not commercial fences. So we just need to get some language in there specifically addressing commercial fences and the suggested, uh, height limit for commercial areas would be six feet. Industrial areas can go up to eight feet. Um, it was the general feeling of planning commission that six feet would be appropriate for commercial areas.
Where do we have commercial fences? What's an example?
Um, I'm trying to think of anywhere, any commercial businesses that might have a fence. Um, you know, auto, uh, repair shops might have a fence around their property.
Cans down here.
Yeah.
Ringses have a fence around their back.
Then the storage place that's over on the opposite side of town, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are, uh, the storage places, are they six foot or eight foot?
I'm honestly not sure.
Yeah, I'm thinking they might be eight foot and like cans down here, it's second-
And they may be. And that, and we could make it eight feet if that's, you know, more desired.
If that's what, if that's what's already there, I'd hate to-
Yeah.
Tell somebody you got to cut two feet off your fence.
So, yeah, we'll check out what some of the existing ones are, so we're not creating a bunch of nonconformities, so.
Okay.
We'll do that and then, um, we're also going to go through all previously adopted ordinances that amended, um, development regulations in the past few years and just make sure that that language is included. Uh, it was our intent to make sure it was all included when we did the update last year, but just kind of double-check and make sure it all made it in there.[1677.82]